Live on YouTube, I believe that just came up. And we may connect into that momentarily.
I just tried clicking on the link from, from next door. And it goes to no content, so I don't know if that link's bad or if something else is going on, but.
Well, I've got two computers here. One says this channel has no videos, so we may be still hooking that up. I see a live on YouTube. But.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Vice Mayor.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, we are live on YouTube now. There's a little bit of a delay.
Okay, I understand that there was a two-minute delay, which is somewhat problematic, but that's unfortunately the YouTube technology interface that we have. So with that, we've got, I believe, do we have Councilmember Coomer on board? Okay, excellent. All right, well, in that case, it is, let's see, it is 5:04. I am going to call this special meeting of the Livermore City Council on Monday, March 23rd. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Since this is rather unusual, I would ask that the city clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Coomer? Councilmember Coomer? Councilmember Monroe?
I'm here, and according to sources, YouTube is not.
Okay, we are working on it. Councilmember Carling?
Hi, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Here.
Mayor Marchand?
Here.
And Councilmember Coomer, one more time, are you here? We are working to reestablish a connection with Councilmember Coomer.
It may be the mute button. Oh, there we go. Councilmember Coomer?
I'm here.
Excellent, okay, we've got the, we've got the councils in the house. Actually, we're in five different houses, as it were. Okay, so excellent. With that, there is an opportunity for the public to address the city council regarding the special meeting item. And they can be providing comments either through YouTube, through written comments to the city clerk. And the city clerk, I believe, will read those comments into the record. So I would ask that the city clerk, if you do have comments, please submit them as soon as possible. Either by email or by YouTube. There is a two-minute delay on YouTube, so submit those immediately. Otherwise, submit them by email and we'll read them into the record. Once the public comment period is over, I will move it over to move staff for their presentation. And then the meeting will go to deliberation by the council for discussion and direction. There will be no further opportunity for the public to comment. Again, this is a special meeting, so we would like your comments ahead of the presentation regarding the. Whoops. We just dropped here. All right, hang on a minute here. I'll have to get this back.
We can still see you.
That's funny, all of a sudden, my, my screen just cleared.
Can you still hear me? This is Coomer.
Yeah, let me just.
All right.
Find back in here. That was unfortunate.
John, this is Jason. Your video's still on, we can still see you.
Okay, very good. My video went off, so I just need to get this back in. And, but I realize that I am still live.
Mayor, would you like me to read the public comment? Will you get that up and running?
That would be great. Return meeting. Oh, there we go, back in, excellent, thank you so much. Okay, I would ask the city clerk to read any comments that there may be about the update from staff and discussion and direction regarding the city operations during the COVID-19 emergency. So with that, please comment. Very good, thank you.
We have two messages so far over YouTube. One from Big Dogs Livermore. They stated, under the new city emergency, does this provide any authority to mandate stores limit the sale of certain products so to make more available to the overall residents? The second public comment we received is from Danielson31. It says, can we post signs on walking trails like Sycamore Grove to ask people to walk single file and move to the opposite side of trail when approaching others so we can stay six feet apart? We also received two public comments via email. The first is from Rachel Snitiger, the executive director of Livermore Downtown. And she stated, Livermore Downtown, Inc., and our downtown business district have activated crisis assistance programs to help our entrepreneurial, family-owned businesses navigate this financially devastating time. We have launched the following, which is a website for livermoredowntown.com. It hosts a business crisis page showing Livermore businesses still open for essential needs through takeout, curbside, delivery, and online sales. That same website is a page populated with links to federal, state, county, local, and corporate relief assistance programs, as well as coronavirus health update links. It's a one-stop location for all businesses and workforce information. LDI will be launching an incentive program this week that will encourage consumers to continue supporting our local businesses to the best of their abilities. This support will enter them into drawings for gift cards, future event tickets, and more. LDI is also launching a T-shirt fundraiser with the tagline, Livermore, six feet apart, but connected at the heart. We know that our community is bonding together in support more than ever. Pricing and order process will be announced this week. We are incredibly proud of our local businesses that are adapting their business plans to go from restaurant to adding crucial means. Meat and seafood orders from Hop Divine, produce from Monsieur's, groceries and staples from First Street Ale House, and the list goes on and on. We appreciate the strong leadership provided through open engagement with city staff, Mayor Marchand, and our LDI council liaison, Councilmember Bob Warner. Lastly, a special shout out to the city landscape maintenance team for putting up the American flags along the First Street core. We are America, stronger together. We'll get through this together. Rachel Snitiger.
That's great. I love the six feet apart but connected at the heart. What a great sentiment.
And that is all of the public comment we've received so far.
Okay.
Actually, Mayor, I'm sorry, a couple more just came in.
Okay, very good. Please.
Lloyd Isen, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name incorrectly, said, are there plans to close the parks to enforce the shelter-in-place order? Another public comment from Evan B. says, thank you for informing the public. Unified Livermore is hosting a site to help people find information for anyone who wants to help local charities. The info is on our site. Robert Coell, can you describe what city services are still going on, outdoor maintenance, for instance? Danielson31, can we encourage merchants to provide total contactless, curbside service where customers pay in advance so that the customer can drive up and get merchandise without any contact? And can we advertise the island metaphor, every household is now living on an island, no one can visit our island, and we cannot leave our island except to get essential services? And that is it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. A couple of questions were related to the parks. And I understand that people in California are being encouraged to, to go outdoors, to walk, to be out in the, in the community, or out in nature. But as far as maintaining single file, the appropriate social distancing, that Livermore Area Recreation and Park District, I think would be the most appropriate to, to post the signage like that regarding that. But as I said, accessing parks is, is, we want people to, to get outside and to walk. But again, maintaining the social distancing is very important, but again, that comes under Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. As far as the authority to limit sales, I'll defer that to the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, good evening. I'm Mark Roberts, your city manager and also your emergency operations chief. And the answer is, you ratified my declaration of a declaration of emergency locally at your last week's meeting, so seven days ago on Monday. And that, that declaration does give us broad authority. I'm going to let the city attorney weigh in more on that. At this particular time, those local establishments actually have that authority themselves. And in fact, we know that local grocery stores and others have been limiting the sale of certain items, those that are most difficult for them to keep in stock across the board. We don't, at this point, have a city mandate that they do that. We want them to remain able to react to the changing circumstances. But again, supply lines actually are working pretty well. Most of the stores are being restocked daily and actually end up with fairly decent amounts of stock. We again encourage people to take what they need for their local and weekly needs, not to stock up beyond that, because that does cause problems with the supply chain. I'm going to ask Jason, I'll call our city attorney to weigh in with any further comments on response to that.
Thank you, Mark. This is Jason Alcoli, your city attorney. Yes, when the proclamation of local emergency was adopted by the city council, that did give the director a broad discretion and authority to protect life and property within Livermore, there are the opportunities to adopt extraordinary measures should they become necessary. At this point, we haven't seen the need. Everyone seems to be responding well, as we expect for our community in Livermore. We've got a great, great community, and they're responding as troopers here. Should it become more challenging, or should there be disruptions in the supply chains? Those extraordinary measures could be looked at, but at this point, they're not necessary.
This is Bob Warner. Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I, well, I've seen the articles in the paper about price gouging. I haven't heard of that here. But we also have the ability to deal with that if it occurs. Is that true?
Vice Mayor Warner, this is your city attorney Jason. Yes, sir, that is. We actually have in our emergency guidebooks, draft resolutions and proclamations and ordinances that can address price gouging. We are remaining vigilant and looking for those type of challenges. We have not experienced that yet. But we are prepared to respond should it arise.
So if the community knows of any instance, they should let the city know.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. And as far as city services go, we absolutely are maintaining the public safety. Police and fire are still on the job 24/7. Most of the functions through city hall can be accessed online. Again, I will hand it off to the city manager for any additional input that he may have.
Certainly. Honorable Mayor, city council members, members of the public. I did want to start at some point and go through a little bit of a summary of what, what we are doing as an overall city staff here. Honorable Mayor, would you like me to do that at this time?
Well, sir, let's hold off just a moment. I do have a couple more comments that just came in, so let me, let me read those if I may.
Okay.
This is from Kathy LaPointe, I'm sorry, Kathy LaPointe Collop, who is the, one of the pastors at Asbury Methodist Church. So the comment is, I am Kathy LaPointe Collop, senior pastor at Asbury United Methodist Church. I have three parts to this comment. First, you may have heard that on March 18th, a volunteer at Open Heart Kitchen who was not showing symptoms found out that he tested positive for the coronavirus. Operations were immediately shut down. Those present were given information and asked to call their doctors. And Asbury's Fellowship Hall was deep cleaned and sanitized. Volunteers are so important to most community outreach programs. However, if one is in a high-risk group or has been in contact with someone who is ill or think that it might be a possibility, or don't feel well, please stay at home. Second, I urge all of us to stay home unless we work in areas considered essential or need to make a quick visit to doctor or grocery store. Third, the programs to meet the needs of the homeless are suffering greatly during this pandemic. Many of the volunteers who make these outreach programs work are in high-risk groups and are not able to volunteer at the present time. The staff who run these programs do not have adequate protective equipment. Our unsheltered residents face higher exposure to the virus. I ask the city council and the city manager to explore how might we get a group of National Guard to run a shelter program for our unsheltered citizens during this pandemic? Perhaps arrangements could be made to use a high school gym not currently in use. Asbury is currently working with the city to run the shelter program at a fellowship hall. However, this would rely on people who are not as well-trained and equipped as the National Guard. Thank you. So this is from Kathy LaPointe Collop, the senior pastor at Asbury Methodist Church. So that's the end of the comments that I have. So with that, let me hand this off to the city manager for your update input and also if you could address the points made by Pastor LaPointe Collop.
Mayor Marchand, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Certainly.
We are still receiving public comments streaming in from YouTube. Did you want to make a statement regarding items streaming in during the meeting?
Okay, if people could get those in as soon as possible, we wouldn't want to continually break up the meeting. Because we do want to get the input from, or the update from the city manager. So do you have a couple more comments at this point?
I do. I'll go ahead and read them.
Okay, thank you.
Danielson31, some merchants are almost contactless, but then merchants want people to sign credit card receipts. We need zero contact. Also, I work with many Chinese institutes where all workers wear masks. Can we get our merchants to wear masks or bandanas to minimize coughing and sneezing on merchants they are selling to? And has anyone in Livermore contacted or contracted coronavirus? Then a comment from Big Dogs Livermore. As the state has activated the National Guard, could they be used to address soup kitchen working to support homelessness? And another from Lloyd Isen, can you provide a status on the availability of medical supplies in Livermore? That is the last one we have for right now.
Okay, well, it sounds like some of them are asking some of the same questions. So at this point, I'm going to hand it off to the city manager. And let's hear the, the update, if you will, please.
Very good. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the community, my name is Mark Roberts. I am your city manager and your emergency operations director. Tonight, I'm going to have three of us address you. I'm going to give you an overall summary of the activities that we've done during the last week. I'm going to concentrate on activities going on in each of the departments that continue to serve the public. I'm going to ask Chief Harris, our police chief, to give a quick update on the items that he and his officers are working on as far as in enforcement and information and education going on to make sure that people understand what's expected of them and the activities that we're doing to bring people into compliance. And then finally, I'm going to have Deputy City Manager Christine Martin give us a summary of the outreach activities through our various electronic means. What have we been doing and what are the things we are setting up to do? So I'd like to start off by saying, you know, during the, the last few days, your entire city organization has been reorienting what it is doing. The proclamation at the county level on March 16th, essentially ordering the shelter in place, followed by orders at the state of California, and then several new major pieces of legislation at the federal level have fundamentally changed the rules for how we operate in certain areas. This total redesign of our city services, as you might imagine, is fairly intensive as we've stopped doing the things that we've done for years and started to essentially both invent and then refine brand-new systems to deal with this very extraordinary event. I'm going to quickly go through each of our major departments and just give you a little highlight of what those changes entail. I want to start with the police department, and Chief Harris, of course, will be talking to us a little bit later. But the, the kinds of changes going on there is that we are consolidating all of our various operations into two teams, an A-team and a B-team, that allows us to essentially collapse the various shifts we would normally have into just a couple of shifts covering the 24-hour-a-day period. This gives us the most redundancy and the most ability to change, to deal with changing staffing levels. While we haven't been impacted as a city organization at this particular point with anyone contracting the virus, we do expect at some point during the crisis, we will need to deal with dramatically adjusted staffing levels. So each of the departments is going through this, the PD out in front of that. The police department today closed their lobby, and they encourage folks to continue to do business by phone, email, and appointment. Walk-ins will be screened using the standard screening questions that help professional users before they will be allowed into the lobby area of the police department. In addition, we want to make sure that people know that if they are dealing with the police department to get a sign-off on a citation, those have been suspended for 60-day, 60 days based on court direction. And anything that was due to be signed off beginning on March 16th has this additional 60-day grace period. And I'll have the chief follow up on that. In addition, if there are other activities that, that need to be done with the police department, we encourage people to electronically engage with those folks. Our fire department continues, as you said, just like the police department, to be on the job 24/7 and responding to the wide variety of calls that they get. They are wearing their protective gear as they interact with people. And so we do want to make sure that the community knows that our full operation is up and running. We are dealing with the situation as we would during other times of high use. And again, trying to provide as much redundancy in that system as possible, keeping our firefighters safe as they are out there interacting with the community and making sure that all of the emergency services that we would normally provide continue to be able to be provided. Switching gears to our non-safety staff members, those operations have been affected the most dramatically. To give you a quick update on the clerk's office, human resources, finance, and IT, which are all part of your administrative services department, again, we are down to sort of skeleton crews running in city hall. Very small percentages of staff, usually one or two per division, sometimes a few more if the division's a little larger, are operating. Most of the work that is being done is being done remotely from home. So that's everything from working on making sure that bills get paid, that staff ultimately gets paid, that utility billing is going on, that essentially, as we're working through our, our challenges in human resources, as you all know, a variety of laws have passed in the past few days fundamentally changing how employees have to be dealt with who are told to go home and shelter in place. We're conforming with all of those items. In addition, the clerk's office, one of the top of their list things was to invent a completely new process out of thin air to actually have this virtual meeting. So that's a tremendous amount of work going on in that department, virtually the vast majority of it remotely. The Department of Public Works is performing all of their essential maintenance activity, whether that's be maintaining our, our street lights or our traffic signals, essentially patching unsafe conditions, making sure that signs are in place, dealing with landscaping issues so that they don't become problems of vermin or other areas that would ultimately cause disease or other problems in the community. The multi-service center is serving now as our warehouse hub for supplies that come into the city. So it's just hand sanitizer, face masks for our emergency operations center for our first responders. So when we do get those things donated to the city, or they come down through our requests from the county, those are actually being coordinated and directed out of that, out of that location. Water resources continues to function normally. They have adjusted their staffing so that they have completely redundant staffing. We want to make sure that if we do have a situation where we have to send people home because of exposure or because they are sick, that we have enough certified personnel to carry on the essential functions dealing with our wastewater treatment plant. Our airport activity is currently down by about 75%. On-site staff has also been reduced to make sure that we have the minimum necessary to allow that facility to operate. Commercial solid waste collection is down significantly, not surprisingly. And correspondingly, the residential solid waste is up because, of course, people are sending a lot of times in their home where they might have been spread out over commercial activity. In community development, our building division continues to operate and focused primarily on making sure that essential permit types are prioritized. As you'll remember, the, the order coming from the county and then reinforced by the state designated certain types of activities as being preeminent and ones that were to continue even with these orders in place. Maintaining essential infrastructure, making sure that things were repaired and in good working order and that thing, the services that both businesses and residential customers relied upon were kept in good working order. And then all housing projects continue to move forward. So that's a direct part of, of the order from the state of California. So essentially, that means that plan checking, inspection, and other things related to those activities are continuing. Other activities that are happening remotely, so if we can do it remotely, we are continuing to move other projects forward that are in the queue. Housing and Human Services Division has about half of the staff in that entire division working through the Emergency Operations Center with the focus on mask care and shelter operations, including keeping food service facilities open for seniors and the homeless, finding alternative venues and staffing for the warming shelter, coordinating facilities for childcare for first responders and medical personnel, and related activities. The remainder of staff work from home, provide us redundant capability on that, and continue to move the projects that basically deal with our most vulnerable populations forward so that those can remain online. Our engineering and planning divisions have about 15% of their staff in city hall. The rest of their staff are basically reporting remotely and carrying on work from home, doing such essential services as project design, plan check, and making sure that essential projects continue to move forward. In the city attorney's office, the, the, the office operations have been adjusted to have primary electronic workflow so that that means that the vast bulk of staff in your city attorney's office is working from home. They are working to basically make sure that all of the things that we are doing under our normal operations and under our emergency powers continue to be compliant with the law, that our contracting is done appropriately, and that even though we are moving through these extraordinary circumstances, that we remain. these extraordinary circumstances, that we remain fully compliant. They've adjusted the hours of operation for some of their staff so that they will be working off-peak hours, again, to make sure that the chance of any sort of spread is absolutely minimized on that. That's a quick highlight of some of the operations that we have been doing overall as far as how we've adjusted things. In City Hall, in our remote locations such as Maintenance Services and our Water Resources, while those lobbies remain unlocked, we do ask people to not enter those locations without an appointment. Virtually, everything that you can do at City Hall can be done remotely, and we are asking folks to do that. And the compliance so far has been amazing. We are down from probably about 300 guests a day on a typical day, down to about two. So people are being incredibly compliant, and even the two that show up and just had a quick question quickly are able to get their items dealt with electronically. So we appreciate everyone working really hard to make sure that they're meeting not only the letter but the spirit of the guidance that we've been putting out there. So we certainly want to appreciate that. We spend a chunk of our day every morning with the senior executive team reviewing the latest directives from the federal, state, and county governments. You'd be surprised how much changes in just 24 hours. Reworking and rewriting our operations plan for the coming 24 hours based on those changing circumstances. And then later in the day, we have a meeting of our Emergency Operations Staff. So while the first meeting is meant to make sure that our city operations remain healthy and active and able to respond to the community, the second meeting is outward-looking and dealing with the challenges that are coming from the community, and you've heard a few of those tonight, dealing with shelter, food, enforcing rules and expectations. Those are all things that we are working on at that second meeting in the day. With that, I wanted to turn it over to Chief Harris, who is just going to give us a quick update on what his staff are doing to help with getting the word out and getting compliance with the county health and the state directives on the shelter in place.
Thank you, Mark. This is Chief Harris, and this is a very fluid situation, rapidly evolving, and you can believe it's only been a week since the shelter in place from the county came out. And it's really, as far as the enforcement side, it's two things. It's a shelter-in-place order for all residents to stay inside their home unless they're involved in an essential activity, and those activities are listed in the order. And that applies to both the county ordinance and the state ordinance. The second part of that is there's identified essential infrastructure or workplaces where individuals can leave if they are employed by one of those essential services. So what's happening is it's a education that has to happen very rapidly in our community to understand what is essential, what is non-essential. And so we're getting calls daily mainly regarding businesses that are operating and people suspecting that they're operating in violation of the order, the shelter-in-place order. So we are responding to those complaints, and we are contacting managers or responsible folks that are employed there, and we're first trying to educate and seek voluntary compliance. And we are getting that as we do that, as we contact people. And oftentimes, the calls that we go to are actually unfounded. They're actually closed, or there is a skeleton crew that is allowed to do minimal, basic maintenance-type thing to make sure other employees can work from home, or they're maintaining items that are in stock, that type of thing, which also is allowed. But we're just kind of going through that, looking at it, and advising the managers. The second piece of it is if we do encounter someone that we don't believe is an essential business per the order, and they do, then we are taking it up a notch with either if it's a corporation, their headquarters, we're getting our City Attorney, the City Manager's Office involved, trying to work with public health, that kind of thing. And we've had one or two of those type of situations where, after some discussion with stakeholders, those businesses have also agreed to shut down and shelter in place. On the individual side, there was some, you know, some comment, public comment about the parks and individuals, and we are not, at this point, proactively stopping people like we would, for example, if they ran a red light or something like that. We're not going up to people that are not in single file or things like that and enforcing this. We, if we see something that is obvious and a public gathering that is in violation, we would ask our officers to contact those folks and, again, educate and seek voluntary compliance. And we, but we have not had that problem. We have not had a lot of that happening so far. Mark, is there anything else, Mark, that you want me to touch on?
No, that's good for this point. I'm sure there'll be questions a little later on. And with that, Christine, why don't you give a quick update on sort of what our outreach to the community has been so far, and maybe some of the things that we're looking forward to?
Great. Thank you, Mark. Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. And as Mark just said tonight, I wanted to present you with a comprehensive overview of the various methods and channels that your staff have been communicating with the public regarding the COVID-19. First, we have been in constant communication with our regional and community partners, sharing each other's messages across our various platforms, social media platforms, both to make sure that we have a consistent message to the community and also to help us all reach a broader population across the community. The partners include LARPD, our Park District, the School District, Chabot-Las Pecitas Community College, Lawrence Livermore and Sandia Labs, Cal Water, Zone 7, Red Cross, Wheels, County Health, and County Office of Emergency Services. Just as a general overview, we've been posting about any action that the city has taken, such as the declaration of emergency, the shelter-at-home orders for both the county and the state, and information sharing about Livermore businesses and ways that they are staying open and innovative. And we've been posting about ways for folks in the community to help out while they're sheltering at home. But I did want to give you some actual, specific ways that we've outreach. Specifically with regard to our city's website, we have created a COVID-19 banner right on our homepage that folks can click on. It takes you into a dedicated COVID-19 webpage that has links to a number of resources. I wanted to walk through all of those items that are available. We consider it a one-stop shop for the community to go to for information, and we're consistently updating and making sure that our links are working. For example, we have links to all of the documents I spoke of earlier, the emergency declaration, the county and state shelter-at-home orders, links to the FAQs about those orders, which include information on what is considered essential and non-essential services. We also have links or a section on the website that explains all the different ways that Mark talked about, ways to conduct business with all of our city departments, so folks can understand how they can go online to pay bills, they can get access to our library's digital collection, they can report a maintenance emergency. All of that is listed on this COVID site. We also link to other government services such as LARPD and the School District, so if folks need to reach out to those organizations, we've got a direct link to them. We have links to public transit. We have links to federal and state-supported informational sites such as, you can link right to information on the tax deadlines that both the state and federal governments have extended. We have a link to the DMV where they have also extended deadlines. And we have information to link you into disability and paid family leave for the state. Some other links we provide are links to Alameda County Small Business Development Center for businesses seeking information about small business loan opportunities during this time. We have links to Livermore Downtown and Tri Valley, Tri Valley to Go, which is a Tri Valley spot where you can go and see all of the restaurants that are open in the Tri Valley. We also are providing links to trusted sources of information about the virus itself. So we have links to the CDC and WHO, the World Health Organization, where folks can go and find out how to protect themselves and their family. There's guidance on cleaning, disinfecting, and guidance that takes you to some Mythbusters. And secondly, we've been continuously posting to our social media platforms. That includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor. And I will report that all of those platforms are seeing higher-than-normal traffic volumes during this month. And I specifically want to give you updates on three of our platforms, Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. So first, Facebook. Since the end of February, when this all really started getting attention here in the county, we've done about 20 posts related specifically to COVID-19, and we've added about 300 new followers in that timeframe, which is usually, we wouldn't see 300, we would see 300 followers in about three to six months. We saw that in the course of just one month. The reach of our posts vary, of course, by the topic and by the post itself, but there are two that appear to have reached the most users, either by shares or direct views, are the Mayor's Letter and a post which we shared a county graphic of open and closed businesses during the shelter-at-home order. Both of those reached about 3,000 people. Next, on Twitter, we have about 3,100 Twitter followers as of today, and this includes 84 new followers since March. And again, that is not a typical gain. Normally, we only gain about 10 to 20 new followers a month. With Twitter, we commonly use that platform to retweet information that's been put out from reputable sources such as the county, the state, or the CDC. For example, one day in March, on March 19th, we, the city, retweeted nine tweets from various sources that day, sharing information. And on March, oh, from March 1st through today, through the 23rd, we've had 30,000 tweet impressions, which is the same as clicking on a post or liking a post. And we've had over 20 tweets that we have posted in March. And so this actually means it's a comparison. Normally, in a typical month, we'll have about 13 tweets and 8,700 impressions. So you can see the comparison from 87 to 30,000 is quite a difference. And then lastly, on Nextdoor, that's by far our largest, furthest-reaching platform. We have 33,000 members across 63 neighborhoods in our city. And just one example of a very successful engagement with the community was, again, with the Mayor's Letter that had over 9,800 impressions, meaning it was opened or shared that many times. Our local declaration of emergency also received about 10,000 impressions. And the average COVID post that we've done has reached about 3,000 members. Lastly, I'd just like to conclude with some next steps. This is a very fluid situation, and we're trying to constantly adapt. Your staff has been doing a lot of communicating on various fronts, but there's more to be done, and we understand that. While normally, best practices in social media would ask for caution and discretion in sharing information so as not to create user fatigue or cause people to unfollow your platform, in this case, getting information out is actually a good thing, and people seem to be ready to receive that. Our next steps focus on getting quality content posted in a timely fashion. So we'll be posting a series of links to resources. We'll continue to post about safety precautions that are being put out, again, from reputable sources, and we're going to continue to post about ways the community can get involved during their shelter at home. We are engaging a multidisciplinary team of talented public information specialists in water resources, the library, our police and fire departments, to make sure that our content is factual, engaging, and relevant across all of our communication channels. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Christine. Essentially, what you've heard then is just a snapshot across your larger city organization about the kinds of things that you've directed as the council that we be involved in. Obviously, the intent of all of these activities is to provide information so that the maximum number of people self-isolate in their places of residence within Livermore to the maximum extent feasible, while enabling our essential services and businesses to continue. Of course, the point of all of this is to slow the spread of COVID-19, and that's what's driving our interpretation of these ordinances, our activities at work to make sure that we're doing everything we can to slow the spread of COVID-19 within side our city organization and within the community at large. With that, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, that concludes staff's presentation. And of course, we are here for questions and then ultimately for your direction this evening.
Mr. Roberts, a couple of the speakers brought up the National Guard, and I understand that the governor has activated the National Guard, and the primary focus would be on surge hospitals, you know, field hospital facilities, and also assistance in feeding the needy and those that are, need assistance. Could you speak to that, please?
Yes. So, Honorable Mayor, you are correct that both at the federal level and at the state level, enabling legislation and then direction has been given to have the Guard begin to preposition its assets throughout California, concentrating on the large metropolitan areas to begin with, and then ultimately spreading out throughout the state, and doing just what the Guard does in emergencies. You've certainly turned on the TV and watched as they have responded to disasters from throughout the country. They ultimately do things like feed people who need to be fed, help house people that need to be housed, help with hospitals if that is a need, and those are the kinds of things that they are going to be engaged particularly, helping feed people who can't feed themselves for whatever reason, because either the volunteer network or other safety net services have been impacted by the disaster. And then essentially to preposition to help with the overflow that might happen in hospitals. Of course, the whole point that we are doing all of these activities is to flatten that curve, to make sure that the number of cases that we get of COVID-19 do not overwhelm our healthcare system. The Guard is an additional level of security to make sure that people can be taken care of in these extraordinary circumstances. The Guard also has the ability to help maintain order. In this particular disaster, that has not been the focus that the governor has directed, and in fact, local law enforcement has it well in hand. There's not been requests for that in particular. So essentially, what we see the Guard doing is prepositioning, although we haven't seen any activity here locally. The way that those requests ultimately work is if we do have a need here at the local level that exhausts our local ability to respond to it, our Emergency Operations Center here locally is coordinated with the county, which is our operational area, and then through the county all the way up to the state to make sure that we get the services, supplies, and personnel necessary to address whatever the issue is that we need to have addressed. This system is built. In fact, California is the leader in the nation at actually assembling this system. It was originally assembled to deal with fires and earthquakes, something we have a lot of in California. So we are actually extremely well-practiced. Your senior staff has all gone through an extensive, week-long training process. Staff throughout the organization has received essentially dozens of hours of training on dealing with this. And the reason that this system is in place is to make sure that requests are not duplicated, that resources get distributed through the county and ultimately through the local level. through the county and ultimately through the local level effectively and efficiently, and that we don't have a lot of crosstalk and duplication going in, in our, on our systems. So those systems are up and running. The National Guard will be part of the system that responds to that overall, but ultimately it'll be coordinated from the state level down through the county level, and then ultimately at the local level.
So Pastor LaPointe Collop from Asbury Methodist specifically asked if there is a way that they could get some assistance from the National Guard or some other resources. How would, how would that be affected?
So what, what Asbury has done is exactly what they're supposed to do, which is contact us locally. And then to define the need, the thing that we're trying to solve, then your staff, who are experts in this area in human services, in dealing with the various county and state and federal programs, and are made aware of the resources available, we look for essentially the most effective, efficient, and quickest system to deal with it. And then basically, if we don't have those resources here locally, then we go up and ask our, our county, our operational area, as we search for those resources. So the speaker was correct. They have contacted us. We are having discussions with that. And we're looking at a variety of alternative ways to deal with the various pieces of that puzzle. On the feeding side of things, we're cooperating with L A R P D, who is using facilities at Robert Livermore Center to deal with the everyday feeding issues that are normally handled by Open Heart Kitchen and some of our other nonprofit partners. On the refuge, we're looking at a couple of different alternatives, but there are complications. Running a homeless shelter in normal times is pretty complicated. There are very specific rules. There's training that has to be done for the volunteers and other things. Running it during an epidemic or a pandemic is exponentially more complicated because of the need to socially distance, to make sure people don't come into contact with each other, to make sure that people are screened appropriately. So we're looking at both, how do we either get the refuge back up and running, or how do we provide an alternative for people to be housed safely and effectively that doesn't endanger themselves or other people in the spread of the virus? So we actually had a conversation earlier this afternoon in our emergency operations meeting, and I expect that we were in contact with Asbury today, and we will continue to be as we solve this. I expect in the next few days, we will, we will have a solution, whether it's an ability to get the refuge back up and running, or to have an alternative that, that serves the same purpose by essentially hotel vouchers or some other means to basically get people undercover and separated from each other.
Okay, so the bottom line is, is we are in contact and we are working to find a solution?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for, for clarifying that. Okay, so other council members?
This is Bob Warner. First of all, I wanted to thank Mark and the staff for a very thorough and helpful overview. And I presume all of that information is posted, or are we anticipating that people would listen to this? Or how, how do we get what you just said to make sure everybody in the community has access to it?
So, so yes and yes. We do hope people are listening. And second of all, the vast majority of this information actually is on the website, and we are pushing big portions of this out through our social media as well. As there are particular items that you'd like us to emphasize, we can make sure that those links or items are a little more prominent or appear in our social media a little more often. But yes, that information is out there on the web.
And the one thing that I would emphasize is, you know, how, how do people get the supplies they need? And to make sure that everyone can access, you know, what stores are open and how to get the, the supplies. And I think the, what was also mentioned in the public comment was to encourage everybody to figure out a way to do zero contact so we don't have to sign credit card receipts and everything.
Absolutely. We can actually work with our merchants associations to encourage that behavior.
This is Bob Carling. I wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Warner said, and also want to thank you guys for the very thorough report. So, and also follow up on what Christine said. I mean, I, one of the points that Christine made was the impact that the mayor's letter had. And I was thinking that a way to keep the city council sort of in front of the community and the, the city council and the city staff in terms of maintaining not only continuity of services, but also watching out for their welfare, is for each of us to send something out on Nextdoor on a periodic basis, on a, on a rather short paragraph, but on a particular topic. I mean, there are many of these things that, you know, we all know about. I'll just give you an example. Say the Growth Brothers site. I mean, work is still going on there, and it may be confusing to people as to why people are still working at Growth Brothers when everybody else is expected to stay home, and that's because they have an exemption for housing. You know, there's, the farmer's market, I'll give you another example. We heard, or your guests read or something, that people were not distancing themselves at the recent farmer's market. And we could just keep reminding them, and I guess my suggestion is that each of the five of us, rather than burden the mayor with this, is to each of us send out something, you know, a couple of messages a week from us individually on a topic that we want to write about, and then have it posted on Nextdoor. And then, and maybe with each of those, then we could exit or point out one of the links that Christine talked about. Because I think there's a ton of valuable information there, but I think for some people, it can be just simply overwhelming. And if we could focus on a topic at a time, and another one was, you know, the homeless. I mean, there's lots of people that are worried about, are they getting the meals? And I think this idea about hotel vouchers is a great idea. But again, how do we get that information out in a timely way to make the community know that, you know, we're on the job, so to speak, without tooting our own horn? I think the public wants to know that not only is the city staff working, but the city council is as well. That's just a suggestion I have.
I'd like to follow up with that as well, as is Councilmember Monroe. I, I've been thinking about ways to communicate as well. I've been putting some information out on Nextdoor in unofficial capacity. And I, I think continuing that officially is, is great. The problem is that I don't think, we don't necessarily know what people want to know where, where the gaps are. I, we have been doing a, you know, we did farmer's market physically at a booth this past summer. We've done time at the library. I would suggest during this time, we have on a regular basis, it could be probably more than weekly, since this is a situation that's changing weekly. I mean, changing more than, more quickly than weekly. It's, the difference between last week and this week is remarkable. But that we do it on either a daily basis or a several times a week basis, just to take questions or to have information. I know that at the state level, Senator Glazer, Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, and then Tim Grayson, who I think must be part of Glazer's district as well, have had several telephone town halls on particular topics. Those are available, but for people to listen to, wouldn't be a bad idea if we did something similar.
This is, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I forgot to do my thank you because, wow, the amount of work that's gone on from this, from city staff in this past week is amazing. Sorry, should have started.
No worries. Bob Coomer here, and I wanted to echo pretty much what anybody said. I, I do see things still going on around town, not as much. I was particularly impressed with the American flags downtown, and it was really, really good to see, and a real big upper as I drove around yesterday. I, I, I'm not sure what we can do, but I, I will make myself available for whatever needs to be done. I'll be home all the time. And if anybody needs to check in about anything, or you have any members of the community want to contact me, very simple, I'm, I'm all over the place. Just call my office number. It'll go to my cellphone. So we'll, we'll, we'll take her from there. But thank you for such a thorough report, Mark, Christine, Chief Harris. It provides us a lot of insight, and although we see it going on when we stop to look closely, it isn't apparent to, to, to the average citizen, I don't think. And I want to make sure that you're recognized.
This is Bob Warner. I'd like to follow up on the, what Bob Carling and Trish said about the communications. And some of the conversations we've had earlier is because the situation is changing so rapidly, and we, individuals may not have the latest information. There, one suggestion was, as, as Trish mentioned, that we have perhaps a daily or every other day specified time where a council member and someone from the city staff could be present to answer questions and talk about whatever the latest rumors are, as well as have someone from the other community leader on a particular topic show up. So it could be with respect to the congregations and what they're doing with the homeless. It could be what businesses are doing. But I, I advocate that we think about a daily time period where we just can answer questions from the community. And I also believe that this type of meeting that we're having now, I also advocate we continue to have it on a weekly basis because things are changing so quickly. And I don't want to burden the city staff unreasonably. So I don't know what the right balance is, but I do think there is a need for a lot of communication.
Well, one thing that, that Mayor Marshand obviously here, but one of the things that, that I've seen is that all of us have been receiving emails from our constituents. And I know that all of us have been answering those because that's the way that, that they do get in touch with us. They can contact us via telephone, call in the office, and we can, we can, if we're not here, we can call them back. Similarly, they can email us, and that way there's social distancing. But I know that all of us answer our emails within, within a couple of days, and I've gotten a lot of emails. Similarly, I've seen a number of posts on Nextdoor answering questions. Once again, the staff did a phenomenal job. I don't know how many people recognize the fact that the governor made the changes to his order on Saturday night, and the city staff worked tirelessly through the weekend to make this meeting happen. There was a lot of technology behind this and legal considerations that had to be maintained and had to be considered to make this meeting happen. So again, thanks to the staff that did a tremendous job over the weekend making this happen and making this accessible to everybody. But again, if people have questions, they can contact any of the city council members. You can go onto the website, click on email, and you'll get, get us immediately. We'll get back to you within a couple of days at the most. So we are available if people have specific questions. I like the idea of, of having a regular time. If people have specific, or one of the community outreach things that we, I just did was on Thursday, I've got a half-hour interview working on, on COVID-19 on TV 30. So that's available on demand. People can go to TV 30, pull up the mayor's report, and you'll see what the city is doing on COVID-19. So there are a lot of different avenues if people want information. The website has a tremendous amount of information, and if you have specific questions, send an email to either me or any of the other council members, and we'll be happy to respond to you.
And that's good. Could I ask, Mark, could you comment on the thought of us having a specified time where just people could call in and ask questions, or you could give an update? Is that feasible or too burdensome? Could you give us your perspective on what makes sense?
Okay, so the first piece of this is, as you heard from the numbers, the amount of communicating and the resources that we have redeployed toward communicating with the community in a very short time is dramatic. And so I think the most honest answer would be not right now, but we are continuing to build a capacity, and I think we can get that done relatively shortly. And so what I'd like to commit to is, you know, I've heard a couple of different themes here, which is being able to take questions either in writing or live. In writing's easier, live's harder. It just takes more technology, more coordination, and more interaction. Not impossible, but it would sort of be my second tier. My first tier would be if you, perhaps setting up a link or an email address that people could get to where they could submit questions. And then we could periodically, perhaps starting out at a cadence of every couple of days, and then shoot for getting down to daily of sort of doing a response, and then sort of evaluating that response technology, whether that's a, whether those ones are particularly are live or are video. Each sort of takes up resources in its own way. And then moving to make sure that all the council members are in, are involved in this, so there's a division of labor, either to be dealing with these general questions or very specific areas. Because many of the questions may cluster around particular issues or items. You know, in other words, is it fine to basically be outside in the parks? And all the questions related to what are the do's and don'ts of that? Down to sort of what's going on in downtown? Who's open? Who's closed? What's, what are the ways that we're making improvements there? Down to personal safety and other things? So I think what I'd really like from you guys is the direction you'd like your staff to head, and then we can sort of add capacity as quickly as is feasible so that we can get the information out and that we can do it in a timely manner. Many of the people who are tasked with getting the information out, a few of them are sort of my critical decision makers on my executive team as well. So we have to sort of divide our time a little bit between getting the stuff done and then telling people that we've got it done. And I think designing the system's going to be the part that takes a little time for us, but then once we've got a rhythm to it, it'll be much easier. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I thought it was, it was really good. I think what, bottom line to me was you'll figure it out and let us know what makes sense. But I like your thought of making it written to start with, with a goal of making it as rapid response as possible. I would suggest that, you know, you could look at it and decide which questions need to be answered fast, because there might be something as the situation evolves that needs to be nipped in the mud. The other question was, does it make sense for us to check in on, on a weekly basis with this type of meeting? And I don't think you would need to be as extensive in what you're saying you're doing because you've done all of that. But is, does a weekly check-in like this, given the fact that it is changing rapidly, make sense, or how often?
Well, I think you're gonna end up with some meetings that, that have at least occasional things that, that have to get done. And, and so the, the pacing of the meeting might sort of fall out more naturally as being closer to your original meeting dates on that. Maybe not full agendas in the short run, but more of these check-ins or check-ins with a, a single or a couple of consent calendar items that, that need to get taken care of in the short run. One of which is likely going to be the certification of your most recent election, where there, at least currently, are very specific government code rules around that. Those might change, as we've seen. And I think it depends on how effective our other strategies are. In other words, getting information out, answering questions. And so perhaps scheduling maybe one more of these, especially while we're getting our other systems up and running, might make sense. And then we transition to sort of more timely. In other words, if you have a question on Tuesday, it's not much fun to wait till the following Monday to hear an answer. That, that doesn't work very well. The flip side is if they're big changes, obviously, a check-in like this does a good job at that. So maybe my recommendation on that would be perhaps one more of these check-ins. And then by that time, we'll be able to give you a pretty good update focused mainly on how are we doing on these outreach issues? What systems are up and running and which ones are are going to be coming soon? Does that?
That sounds good. Are you?
Yeah.
Does that mean are you talking next Monday?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to make uh just a comment. Um I think we have to recognize that people receive information and communicate in all different ways. And I think we it's incumbent upon us to think about the multiple ways that we can communicate and and do that in an effective and timely way. I mean, I do appreciate that people are willing to send us emails or phone calls, but not everybody is comfortable either picking up the phone and calling us or taking the time to write us an email. So I think it's incumbent upon us to provide to also provide information. And I also I was interested in the uh information that Christine provided and how much attention the mayor's letter got and um and also the information about open and closed restaurants, as well as the followers on Nextdoor at thirty three thousand. So those seem to me are obvious ways that people, many people are getting information from us. And I think we ought to take advantage of that as as quickly as we can and just continue to um to get information out. And again, I'll reiterate, I I appreciate all the information on the website. But again, I think for some people, it is simply overwhelming and they don't even know where to start and where to go. And if we could keep our messages short, whether it's, you know, in a in some sort of a conference call like this or whether it's written and uh on a variety of topics, because almost everybody out there has got their own pet question they wanna to address. And we can't address all of them, but I think we can pick on a few early on and and at least get started that way to make sure that the community knows that we're here, we're working on this and we're moving forward.
I I want to uh second second that. Um I also wanted to clarify, when you said um Mark that there was, you know, you suggested a email would be something like COVID nineteen at cityoflivermore.net. It's that kind of thing you had in mind?
Something like something like that, but but uh that's not a real e- email site yet, please. So let's be clear about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
That doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Something like that, yes.
Something like that.
Not in existence yet, but.
We would put something up where people could could ask questions that essentially were non emergency questions, which are nice to knows. And then we could could come back um and then spend a a time each day answering those questions. Um and we have a little design work to do on the on the nature of that. It it could be um and there are various platforms out there from Facebook to YouTube to other things of some version of just responding to sort of say, okay, we had three questions around A, B, and C and having the council member um, you know, provide those answers and direct people, you know. One of the things uh Councilmember Carling noted is um you guys have a much better idea of where all this information lives and point people in the right direction um on some of those Q and As. The other piece that we were thinking um is to build on something that you're already doing collectively, um which is to use the city's Facebook site and then have each of you take a topic area that you're particularly interested in and push out a a Nextdoor uh, you know, address to the entire community on that topic. Um because, you know, many of the questions we get group into very specific areas. A status update, safety, outdoor activity, who's open for business, volunteer opportunities. You know, there's a couple of maybe half a dozen or ten groupings where almost all the questions um fall into. And I think having you guys do a a written address on Nextdoor, you know, each in a different area that's relatively short, but still um links to some other things, you know, might be a great way to, again, get the message out in a way that people find easy to to follow and convenient to receive.
Yeah, I I would agree with that. Um I also I I want to a- again, go back to what Councilmember Carling said about people receive messages in different ways. Um and so doing that not only, you know, uh using the video channel as well, you know, for those people who want to see a quick two minute video or or whatever, it seems, you know, recognizing that that's probably down the road a piece, um seems like it would be something reasonable. And 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 uh what Vice Mayor Warner said in terms of pulling other people in the community and again, recognizing we're not talking tomorrow or even next week necessarily. Um but using the different tools that we have to engage people.
I like what Mark said as well, and I uh is is who can organize that for us? Is that somebody in your office, Mark?
Uh it absolutely is. Um so Christine will be taking sort of charge of our next steps um on our outreach process. Um and um what I think we will do with this direction is we've got a we've got sort of a long list here. Um but we're gonna s- uh we're going to first thing tomorrow, get together uh as your executive team and try and prioritize these things first into the things that can be done most easily and most quickly um and then move into those that are a little more complex. But I think it's extremely important for your voices to be out there in our channels um speaking directly to the community. Um you all uh hear uh and have a really good sense of what the questions are out there. We are gathering those overall as your staff. Um and I think combining those two things into um these distinct areas and uh to keep the accurate information flowing out to the community, I think it's going to be really helpful for people.
I I'd like to suggest that as you um parse out the different topics, that we start with the subcommittees and liaison roles we currently perform as the starting point.
That seems like a great hint as to what your area of both expertise and interest would be. So I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Third head nod.
Thank you. It's harder for me to see the head nods.
Nod, 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 nod.
Here's here's a nod.
Thank you.
Can I ask a slightly different question regarding L A R P D? Is there somebody that is uh takes the responsibility to connect with them about the uh point made about signs on the trails?
Yes, um and in fact, uh Matt Fuzy and his staff are in uh our meetings every day, uh our emergency operations coordination meetings. Um and that process is working amazingly well. Um and uh one of the things we did get an update on is when other communities uh change their patterns, it it impacts us. Uh one of the things he noted is it is particularly in their regional open spaces like Sycamore, that they were getting more out of town guests than normal. He has responded by ramping up both the signage and the number of rangers who are on duty um to help people uh use those facilities safely. Um of course, uh the rain's doing it this evening for us or the overcast. Um but uh yes, we have we have daily conversations with L A R P D and I will certainly carry this information uh back to our uh meeting with him tomorrow.
Can you pass one other thing on, which is that I keep seeing children in play playing in playgrounds and given the length of time this virus lasts on metal and plastic, perhaps not such a hot idea?
So we'll we'll note the the concept of uh perhaps additional signage and reminding. It's, you know, as a normal person, it's just hard to remember all the things that you can't do now. So I think uh providing additional signage uh on play equipment and other areas, I think that makes good sense. We will pass that along uh as a suggestion.
Well, and I've I've gotten emails about this as well, where people are pointing out that uh children playing in parks uh are not maintaining the six foot social distancing uh that is required. Uh and uh so these are all things, just just we need to keep reminding people that uh as you have groups of children hanging out together, they need to stay six feet apart, you need that social distancing. Uh because as the Councilmember Monroe pointed out, uh this virus does live for days on on metal surfaces.
Very good. We will pass that along and we'll also keep that uh forefront of our um social media and outreach. Um the most innocuous things that were fine just a few days ago uh now can turn deadly. Um you know, to not only the people involved, but to the broader community. Um and I think it's uh just going to take a lot of effort, both by us to pu- push that message out and by the community to to continuously try and do the right thing.
Wash your hands, don't touch your face.
Absolutely.
So this is a Bob Warner, I've got another question. In terms of the, do we know how many people were in the community were participating, listening into this? And the other question I've got is, I think now that we're going electronically, are you uh thinking that five o'clock is the right time to start now? Does that make sense?
Um I'd take my fro- fro- from a staffing standpoint, it makes sense. Your your staff is already working um extended hours and most many of our staff who are have had their hours and or duties adjusted. Um but if there is a better time that works better for the community, um we can make that happen as well. I'd be taking my direction on sort of the the time from from all you all at the moment.
I did get uh one complaint, I'm sorry, I did get one complaint that uh uh they they felt that it wasn't noticed sufficiently. Uh but I think that if we are going to stick with the five o'clock for these these uh um updates, these uh special meetings, I think that once we get the word out that people are are used to that and accustomed uh to the different time, I think that'll work better.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'm with you on that five o'clock thing.
Do we know how many people are uh listening in?
Yes, I just got a a quick count from Marie, um our city clerk, who said um that we're just under ninety folks who are listening in live.
Wow.
Oops, although you're losing some people. Um so so that actually, that number fluctuates around. I guess we got less interesting here. Um our numbers are dropping off in the last few minutes.
Quick, say something.
I'll 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 say something. Um so I I had a couple of other questions and I don't know that they need to be answered right now. Um one of the things that I found, and you you did address this a little bit, but one of the things I found challenging for myself, and I think it is for uh if I I assume for other people as well, is the um articulation between the wh- what's happening at the state level, what's happening at the county level and what's happening at the city level. Um if there is a way to explain that, you know, we talked a little bit about how that was going to happen uh with uh homeless homelessness uh situation. Um uh by the way, I is it likely that we're going to get hotels as well?
So to answer you that question directly, um it is not likely in the short run that the state will be acquiring uh essentially entire complexes. It is likely in the short run that we will be purchasing rooms for some of our vulnerable population.
Okay.
Well, the county is, I would also say that the county is is uh purchasing or getting hotel rooms or uh for those that have been identified as being positive and need to be quarantined. And those are all in Oakland.
That that is correct, and and I uh didn't mean to discount those two large hotels that essentially the state acquired and uh county and and ca- uh city of Oakland are running together um and are only for those who have uh who have been identified uh as actually having um the virus or quarantined and waiting for test results on that. Um so that was what my first part of my answer was trying to refer to is we don't expect to have uh the state step in um and and acquire entire facilities inside the boundaries of Livermore, at least not right now. Um that can change.
No, I agree. And of course, county has the information on on positives. The cities do not have that. Only the county has the information about uh people that are positive or presumptive for COVID nineteen.
I think it'd be interesting to explain it to the residents too, because I don't, I mean, I asked Mark this question this afternoon, and I don't think the residents understand and have an appreciation about why it's done that way.
So the county um has explained to each of the cities that it is done that way um because the county is the operational area, both from a disaster standpoint and from a health standpoint. That's how health services are delivered in the state of California. And that's how um the information is reported out. What they did not want to do um is note the exact number of cases by individual agency, because they felt that that information was fairly useless to the public. If, for example, you knew there were a bunch of cases in Pleasanton, but none in Livermore, you might uh adjust your behavior inappropriately by somehow thinking there is a lower risk in Livermore than there were in Pleasanton. First of all, neither of those things is true. Um we don't have exact information by communities, but for example. So we know we have forty five confirmed cases countywide. There are thirteen cities in the county. So I think we should all act as.
Including us.
Including us, and we should we should act as if there are um uh we should um, oh boy, our our cases confirmed, I just got texted by my staff that our cases confirmed, uh that was forty five last week, we're up to a hundred and twelve confirmed cases. We should all be behaving as if there are active cases within our community, because I think that's accurate at this particular point. Um and so whether there's a few more or a few less cases in our particular community is is really not important, because people's behavior, we need to all act as if the virus is out there. It is in the community and is easily transmitted, because all those things are true. Um so from that perspective, we expect the numbers to go up dramatically during the next few weeks as testing becomes more widespread. So it's gonna get a lot worse before it starts to get better. If we are all able to ha- doing a stunningly good job of sheltering at home, we can flatten that curve. But this particular uh virus is very contagious. Um and we are now getting information that that while certainly vulnerable populations are the most vulnerable, this this virus kills all ages and all backgrounds, uh and so it does not discriminate. And we want to make sure that our entire community is as safe as possible. So we will not have individual community numbers, but we do have county numbers and they're climbing sharply.
That's a that's a large jump. Large jump, it's doing, funny thing, it's doing just what it was predicted to do.
Yes.
Um I wanted to uh give and uh one way for the community to think about this in in terms of of, you know. First of all, I wanted to say something about sheltering in place, which or self sheltering at home. Um and remind, you know, noting that going outside for exercise is part of that. It is okay to go outside while while maintaining the distance. Um the second thing is, yeah, an analogy that um is really useful with kids, but also I think for adults, is to think about this as being powdered sugar. Um and it's powdered sugar that has a range of about six feet. And what you want to do is avoid um be, you know, getting your powdered sugar on anybody else that doesn't already have your particular brand of powdered sugar. So I I I thought it was a real, yeah, it's, I mean, everybody knows what powdered sugar's like. Who knows how it sticks, knows how easily it it transfers your powdered sugar with a range of about six feet.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, I I did just want to wrap up with um. We've been concentrating on the areas for improvement in the areas that the community, we need to reinforce messages, and all of those things are absolutely true. Um but for a community of ninety one thousand um that has uh tens of thousands of people who traditionally would report to work uh in this community, um the speed at which the community has complied with these orders is stunning and extremely positive. We still have more work to do and we will continue to do that work in the coming days. But I certainly want to reach out to anybody who's listening to note that the level of compliance and the level of understanding how important this is uh is amazing. Um your messaging out in the community is being uh is being listened to. Um people are working really hard to do the right thing. Um and and that on a community wide basis, when you think of all of our different backgrounds and and all of our different beliefs, to have a- a- almost complete unanimity um i- is amazing. So a bi- a big thank you going out to everybody who's working hard and doing things incredibly differently and having their their uh sometimes their livelihood and their lifestyle um uh upended um and doing it for the most part with really good humor um and an understanding of how important this is. Um that's amazing, and your staff wanted to just bring that uh to your collective attention, um because the the speed at which compliance has been obtained overall has been impressive. We still have a little more work to do and we'll have continuing work to do in the coming weeks. Um but thanks for all that has happened so far.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work that you've been doing. And again, I just want to impress on everybody that's listening tonight. Uh if you do have a question, uh if you've got a concern, please just go onto the website uh and there's uh you can you can click on any of us uh and at send us an email and we'll be more than happy to answer your question. It might take us a day or two, because we are dealing with a lot of different things right now. But please, if you've got a question, email the city. you've got a question, email the city council, email the staff, we will get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the city clerk and her staff for making this all work. I think they've been doing yeoman service as well.
There are, I do have a couple more public comments, I believe, that just came in on the YouTube. From, I got a note from the city clerk. If I could ask the city clerk to read those into the record?
Definitely. We received comment from Shruti Pollywall. I am an in-home childcare provider and wanted to know what is the city doing to help us to stay open and help and care for essential workforce family? Do you have any department that can help us? By the time we get done with work, most of the grocery stores are empty and it's becoming very hard to find basic groceries and cleaning and protective supplies for our program. Big Dogs Livermore said shelves are empty, especially those who are essential and working extended hours. Could the city suggest stores and to find ways to set hours for essential workers? Dawn Brown, thank you, council, first responders, and the many, many staff that are responsible for keeping the city functioning and also in compliance with state mandates. Max Sklar, the CDC guidelines I've read say there is no evidence of significant danger of transfer from objects. Arthur Pontau said the peak was 63 watching. And just to clarify, those numbers are from both our Zoom webinar and YouTube. Eric Esser, thank you guys for doing this. It's super convenient to watch this on YouTube Live, and this will be very helpful going forward. Alan Burnham, 102, I'm sorry, 112 in Alameda County does not include the 10 from Berkeley because they are independent in many ways.
Thank you.
Max Sklar, look for sharper jumps as our testing capabilities ramp up. And then we also received some via Zoom. Kathy LaPointe Callup said Asbury wasn't contacted today, but they were contacted yesterday. They didn't receive anything new today. Heather Grow of Open Heart Kitchen, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank the city staff for all of their hard work. I know I was emailing them at night and over the weekend, and they were always there answering our emails and helping us plan essential services. They really have been working hard for our community. And that is the last one.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we addressed a number of those during our talk. There was one about the childcare, that I know that there's been concern about childcare for the first responders. Question for the city manager, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, so I would have, if that person is still listening, or if you have contact information, if you can have them contact our office and we'll point them in the right direction. As you might imagine, we are still coordinating with all of our partners here, trying to figure out how do we make some of these things work better. You heard that theme in some of those comments. Are there, are there ways that we can get this to work better to make sure that stores do have what people need, you know, late into their operating hours. And we'll be working with the stores as well on that. But if there's specific questions from that one childcare provider, I'd encourage them to go to our website and contact the city manager's office, and we will get them pointed in the right direction.
And also they could check with Livermore Downtown, Inc., because there are restaurants out there that have turned into grocery stores that are taking orders. And perhaps you could place an order with one of those restaurants to get some of those supplies that you do need. But get check with Livermore Downtown, Inc. on their website.
This is Bob Warner. And I wanted to also thank the pastor of Asbury United Methodist for sharing what she knew. And I think that goes in the spirit of that we're all trying to get the information that we know out there. And that all I can recommend to people is that we're doing the best we can to have the correct and complete information on the city's website.
I wanted to comment on the, to the city clerk's office, but also to the way in which the city's taking, the residents are taking this seriously and staff is listening. The fact that this is a totally virtual meeting happened because it began with a public for component, because that is Brown Act compliant. Our residents said, guys, what are you thinking? Because that's what we told them, and the state has told them. We listened and very, very quickly, y'all there, Maria and the clerk staff and everybody else who worked on this, within an hour or two had switched it over. That is amazing. I think it really deserves to be called out as being both responsive and being collaborative with everybody in the city.
Yep.
All right. So there being no further business for the council tonight, there was some talk about having another one of these possibly next Monday. Is that the consensus?
Sure.
Yes, for me.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it'll be this, be coming up Monday, the 30th, and that would be at five o'clock again. We'll have this back up and running. All right. So another meeting, another special meeting, we'll be noticing that as well. If there are questions from the public, please email the city council members, send an email to the city, or call the offices, and we'll be more than happy to address your concerns and answer your questions. All right. So with that, no further business. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you.